Good morning. It is Tuesday, December 28, 2021, and I'll call the board of the Story County Board of Supervisors meeting. Please stand if you are able and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any changes to today's agenda? So is there a motion to adopt today's agenda? So moved. It's been moved and seconded. Markin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Sedan's aye. Now's the time for public comments. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. If anyone would like to make public comment, please come forward or if you're on Zoom, use the raise hand function. If they ask you to call on you if you're on Zoom. We have, you say right now for items that are on the agenda. We have things that are off the agenda later today. Sure. No, please come forward here. Say your name.
Thank you all.
Yes.
Great. Nancy Carroll with Heartland Senior Services. And I just saw on the agenda today that we were on the ineligible list for our grant supplemental. So of course I had concern and wanting to understand why we're ineligible. I felt like I'd read the materials and I was shocked to see we're on that list. So that's why I'm here today to try to understand and seek, seek understanding.
Sure, sure, sure.
And yet to also express our disappointment.
Sure, sure, sure. I have to look back at our notes on that, but it's partially was just related to land acquisition, Nancy. It was on, it was on the building, the building destruction, this construction.
Yes.
And, and it is due to information that we have been receiving. We've received information that you can do with construction on the public, but we haven't received anything with a lot of private buildings. And we've asked the Treasury, Treasury several times on that. We've gone to our state and national organization and they don't see where we could put funding toward a private, private building. And that it has to clearly identify how it will be used to mitigate COVID. Not necessarily just for expansion, but how it's being, why it's not.
Okay, just, okay, so to clarify, the, the, the land though will be owned by the city of Ames. Did you understand, was that clear?
I don't have it in front of me.
Okay, okay. So the building yes would be owned by a nonprofit.
Right.
So that was an issue though of
Right.
the building ownership being private.
Right.
And what was the COVID?
Well, the dollars are related to COVID. So it needed to clearly identify its connection to COVID. Not, not just like if there's an expansion to serve more people. And I'm speaking in general, in general, because I'm not, don't have your application in front of us. It was that it has to have kind of that direct tie to COVID.
Right. And we couldn't agree more. And I felt like our application really spoke to the direct application to seniors that were the hardest hit. So if there's any way I can implore that, would you please reconsider? I guess taking us off the ineligible list to give that more thought and research or whatever it might be. And if not, I appreciate and respect your process, but I'm just, I'm just so disappointed because I think again, for the seniors of Story County, this is an amazing collaboration programmatically in a fabulous facility that would really address COVID-related issues.
Sure.
And social networking and all the things we spoke to, because we really hit that hard in our application that we thought it was a perfect fit.
Sure.
So I'm really.
And, and this will have discussion when we get to that.
Okay, so that, yeah, so thank you for hearing me and for receiving my comments.
Any other comments? Did you say there was somebody else?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't know who it is though. Whoever's hand is raised. Oh, Leanne Wilson, I'm sorry.
Yes, hello. I just want to say I'm very excited to see that, that the county is trying to set up a climate action plan. And I'm very excited about that. So thank you.
Thank you, Leanne. Your comments. Anything else? All right. There's no agency, agency reports today, so consideration of the 1221, 21 minutes.
I would move approval of the minutes.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Basil?
Aye.
Markin?
Aye.
Sedan's aye. I will move on to consideration of personnel actions.
I need approval of personnel actions as listed.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Markin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Sedan's aye. Next we'll move on to consent agenda. Anyone pulling anything from today's consent agenda? No?
No, I would move approval of consent agenda as presented.
Been moved and seconded. Basil?
Aye.
Markin?
Aye.
Sedan's aye. Consent agenda is approved. Now we are on to item number 10, public hearing item. It's the first consideration of ordinance number 300, establishing voting precincts of Story County in response to federal decennial census in accordance with chapter 49. Supervisor, supervisor, auditor Martin. He's taking this. We will wait just a moment. Let me get that, sorry. There's two of them. I know it's Tuesday, but I'm having a real fun day today.
You and me both.
Morning. Morning, board. We're having a public hearing today about our proposed re-precincting. This is something that we do only every 10 years. I just feel thankful that I had done this once before because we had a very compressed, nothing about this process this time around was ideal, let's put it that way. So the federal process was delayed, the state process was delayed. What wasn't delayed was the city and schools deadline of January 15th. So I would just like to start off by thanking Matt Boyke, our G I S director, Kevin Norris, my deputy of elections, Ron Sykes, my deputy of real estate, Patty Hillman and Scott Wall on real estate, who did a lot of work on our legal descriptions, Shelley Belial helping me with all my publications, Mark Lambert and his staff at City of Ames, Diane Voss, Jolene Lettow at City of Huxley and Karen Wright at City of Huxley. This is a, this is a group project. Where actually everybody in the group did the work. So that's a different from, from thing. So this ordinance anticipates, we have 43 precincts right now. We would go to 44 precincts. So not too much of a difference. A lot of counties have consolidated down. We are fortunate that we have had growth in Story County, not in all places, but certainly Huxley, City of Huxley, once again is our big winner. Not as much as last time where they grew, I think 43% between 2000, 2010, but they grew, I think 27%. And are now sizable. We have to divide them into two precincts. So Ames goes from 20 precincts to 24 precincts. They probably, their map looks the most different. I, I do have up here the legislative maps. They were not particularly easy to work with the way they divided up the city of Ames, which so we basically, Matt Boyke and Ben McConville over at City of Ames, Ames, we came up with the version, Ames came up with two other versions. They actually went with our version. So it was not an easy way to divide. Basically you cannot have a precinct that's in more than one legislative district. And we are working entirely with received information here, right? It's just based on population. We don't look at elected, we don't look at registered voters. We only look at population. We don't look where we have polling places right now. We only look at population. So it, you can't just say like, well, this is what worked before. So let's kind of do it now. You basically get your information and divide it up as evenly as you can. So I guess our, at the, at the end of the whole process, our precincts are a little more urban. Just like our county is a little more urban, where we, we had lost population in our more rural areas and gained it basically west of the interstate, which is in line with what happened 10 years ago. What didn't happen this time around is last time we got our information, April, and we talked about things and you know, really went out and reached out to the public and had some really good discussions and then passed our ordinance in October. This time we got the map on October 28th, which Kevin and I were actually training election officials at the time. And I'm looking at them on my tiny phone in between presentations and it was signed into law by the governor on November 4th. So one thing I would ask you to do with this ordinance is I, I'm asking you to pass it on first consideration, which is not ideal, not what I would like to do, but in the interest of time and getting this published by January 15th so that it's legal, I think is necessary. It's, it's what the cities did for us as part of this process. So where I'm not asking the county to do anything that has not already been done for us by the cities. Kevin still has a lot of work after this process in terms of implementing it in our database and then notifying all our voters. All 99 counties still have only the vaguest idea how that's going to happen. There doesn't seem to be a lot of appetite at the state of doing a max mailing like they did 10 years ago. And there have been certain law changes which limit what we are allowed to do. So when our voters will be notified of these changes, I cannot tell you definitively right now. This goes into effect January 15th. We have to wait until January 25th to see if we are going to be petitioned for a special election from City of Huxley. And then absentee voting for March 1st special elections starts February 9th. And then we have our primary on June 7th. So sometime between January 15th and June 7th, we will notify our voters, but I don't have a date for that yet, or even a process. That's unfortunate, but that's where we are today. So I've given you the sort of the statewide populations by county. I think it's very interesting. We're still in the top 10. I think we were seven and now we're nine, but Dallas, Dubuque and Story are pretty much essentially have the same populations. Let's say that the top 10 most populous counties in Iowa account for over half of the population of Iowa. And then I also provided you worksheets that you can see the populations and the precinct numbers. Franklin Township is so big, I couldn't combine it with the city of Gilbert anymore. So that was a change. And so we only have with this, with this ordinance, we will only have two sort of standalone township only precincts anymore. A lot of those have been combined with the nearest city, which was not unusual, but sort of our, our townships that have no city in them have now been combined with those near, the nearest city, with the exception of Milford Township and Franklin Township. So which are more populous. So some of the precincts are exactly the same. And some are a little bit different. Ames probably is the biggest difference. I think just may as a voter. I went from Ward 2 to Ward 1 and from one legislator to another. So that's, that's our biggest population. So informing those voters is sort of the biggest hill that we have to climb. And honestly, no matter how much information gets out there, there will be people that don't know that this happened until they go to vote for the first time after redistricting.
It happens even with fewer changes than there are.
Yeah.
That's not.
Yeah. So change is always marked. If you have questions for me or Kevin about our process or about the new precincts.
And I may have missed for you, we just wanted to have a clarification. You said there are now 44 precincts?
Yes, we were, we're going from 43 to 44.
Okay, okay. I did miss you. I thought you said we went from 44 to 43. So.
Yeah, no, it was, we actually gained a precinct. Just one. But I think last week we bought more pull pads. And that's because even though we have just one more precinct, we have sort of more urban precincts. So we anticipate needing more pull workers at some of those precincts. So as opposed to a smaller precinct, which has, you know, maybe 125 voters versus one that has 2,000. Elections are more electronic driven, you know, and we also need to secure those in, in places so that we've, we're having a lot of discussions about, about that as well behind the scenes. All part of a process. It's going to be a fun year, right Kevin?
No.
Fun was in air quotes. I don't know if you heard that.
So four more precincts in Ames and a net of
One.
81. So three rural precincts fewer.
Uh.
That combined with
Right. Yeah, well, no, there's actually a net of three there, but because Franklin actually has to become its own precinct now.
Yeah.
So yeah, so Richland, Grant and Nevada will all come to the city of Nevada. And Sherman Township will go to Zari along with Lincoln Township.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay.
And Palestine, Palestine and Lafayette are combined. Palestine already went to Huxley to vote, but now part of, part of Huxley is combined with Palestine and the same with Story City. Lafayette Township already went to Story City as a polling place, but there's like a Story City 1, Story City 2, Lafayette Township. So I mean physically it's not too different for the voters, but the map looks different. And I'm sorry, I don't have a clean map of everything right now. I have some, it's Markit one with my census blocks on there that we had to have agreements for. That's all I have to say.
Any further questions for Mr. Kevin before we open the public hearing?
I would just like to say an amazing job in a not very long period of time.
I'd never want to do anything like this again, like this. It was really not ideal for anybody.
You did a great job and good job explaining it. So.
That, I will open the public hearing. If you'd like to make comments. At ordinance number 300, if you're on Zoom, please use the raise hand function and then I will call on you. If you're in the public meeting room, you can raise your hand and go forward. We'll wait a few seconds to see if anyone wants to make comments. Raise your hand, anyone? Hey, you're not seeing one raise hand or come forward. So we will close the public, public hearing. Any further discussion or comments?
Let me just ask a question about the motion that you requested. You're moving that we adopt the ordinance on first consideration and waive second and third?
Yes.
And that's in very quick explanation of why?
Originally I was going to bring this last week, but with the, the cities have, they don't meet every week, like I guess. I'm like, is that an option? Just once a month? So we were working with their schedules. You couldn't, you could go to second consideration on the third. That this has to be published before it's legal. So I just was, would like to give the county room to make sure. I don't anticipate making any changes at this point in time. We've done the best job that we can. Again, like all the, the cities have passed their ordinances as well, which is built into ours. So train's already well down the track, I guess.
That's fine. I appreciate that. I would note that we adopt ordinance 300 establishing voting precincts in Story County in response to the federal decennial census in accordance with chapter 49 and that will waive second and third consideration.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Markin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Sedan's aye. Thank you.
Thank you, board.
Next we'll move on to additional items. Consideration of a memorandum of agreement between Story County and the cities.
Yep. Right. So these agreements are necessary. There are little pieces on the map that either maroon pieces of townships so that they are not contiguous with their voting precincts. And then there were also some annexations which were not included in the census map. So these agreements outline all of those and then assign them to a precinct that contiguous precinct. So these are for voting purposes only. If there are township people assigned to a town precinct for this reason, they still get a township ballot. This is, cities don't incur any costs. These people are not eligible for city elections. I mean, in a city school election, they would get a school only ballot and the schools bear, bear that cost for that election. So just to reiterate that this is for voting purposes only that these people are assigned to. And that's, that's happening in Ames, Nevada, Huxley and Story City. So.
And it looked like, I think you mentioned this, but some of the resolutions, it looked like there were actually errors in the census because
Those, those are, those are the sense, I could actually show you. Here's, here's the Story City map. See this? It's in red, but it's, it's white.
Yeah.
So that's part of Story City, but it wasn't, it wasn't included in the census's counting of Story City. So we have to make that correction through these agreements. This is one of the reasons why I was glad I had done this before, because in the leisurely days of 2011, you know, I thought everything was done. And the Secretary of State's office was like, oh, well, there, the census block was forgotten. So now you have to have an agreement. Like, what? So I was looking for it this time around, even though it'd been 10 years, some things are memorable. Like little, little pieces of the map that got forgotten. So.
Any further questions? Thank you. Is there a motion?
I would move approval of the memorandum of agreement between Story County and Ames, Huxley, Nevada and Story City for voting precincts.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Basil?
Aye.
Markin?
Aye.
Sedan's aye.
And I, I wasn't able to unmute myself quickly enough in the last section, but I just want to echo Linda and say thank you to everyone on your team and all the cooperation and hard work that went into getting this done so quickly.
A lot of people working on this. So doing things that we've done in six months and you know, two or three weeks. So I guess not ideal, but we got it done.
We appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Next we'll move on to that consideration of climate resiliency planning steps and timeframe.
Yeah, I will, sorry that I'm here on Zoom. Just to open it up by saying thank you to Leanne for doing all of the legwork on this. She and I have had many conversations about what the, the county can be doing to move forward as far as climate resiliency and where there are opportunities. And I, I know, I know there have been other conversations outside of mine with Leanne. So I know this is important to all of us, but I did just want to take a second to say thanks and pass it on to Leanne and, and also just say I'm really excited that we're talking about this.
Well, good morning. Thank you. So in the memo that was prepared for today's board agenda in the packet, I outlined a timeframe that really just, it's, I put in there the next 12 to 18 months. As we've all learned over the past almost 24 months, we always hope for the best, but prepare for the worst. So just keep in mind, it's an approximate timeframe, best guess that I could come up with based on what other counties and have undertaken as well as the city of Ames and to get to where they are right now. This is a timeframe and a series of steps that is developing a climate resilience or developing steps towards climate resiliency planning at this stage for Story County government operations only. Not Story County in general. That, that would be a next step. And I, I want to stress that that's important to keep in mind because that is a much larger process than what this is. This is again, just for our own government operations to see where we are from standpoint on our greenhouse gas inventory and then setting some targets long term. The, I'll be glad answering questions. The steps do begin in January with the board adopting resolution to really solidify this approach and then reactivating the Go Green Team. And that was last in existence. Oh, Latifah, do you remember 2015, 2014? I think they, the Go Green Team went away. We were doing some strategic planning from a sustainability standpoint from like 2006 for a period of few years. The Go Green Team was a staff, staff committee, representatives from various departments that really was working on the sustainability strategic plan. Our Go Green Plan led to a lot of the practices you see now, including the recycling bins in the basement. Some larger, some smaller practices. Part of this approach reactivates that Go Green Team so that the board has a kind of a sounding board to, and, and another group to, just like our C I P review committee to actually do the, gain to weeds and develop some recommendations for the board. So that, that resolution in January would name the members of the Go Green Team. So there'd be some outreach to that point too. Staff does recommend that you adopt this approach, approve the approach and the steps are outlined. We did not budget anything for this current fiscal year for doing any type of study in this regard. I've had some conversations with individuals from the University of Northern Iowa as well as the Des Moines MPO. They have the ability and technical, technical knowledge on staff to do the greenhouse gas inventory on this outlined in here. Staff could do as well, but time is of a concern. And they've done it on a more regular basis and there's not necessarily a learning curve. So we are recommending that we establish contract with the entity to be determined yet. That contract will come back before the board amount not to exceed $5,000, which again is on budget for this preliminary study. This is not developing the climate, climate resiliency plan. That's 12 to 18 months down the road.
So $5,000 is just the inventory.
Just the inventory. Yeah. Are there any questions? Are there any questions for me or anything else I can add?
Are you sure the 5,000 is there?
Yes.
And Leanne, in your conversations, it was, it was established that. We, we have to have that inventory step. Formally done before we can move forward with any, any planning and action steps.
That's good, that's good clarification. We've actually never done, even when we did have the Go Green Team activated or in, in process, we've never done an inventory of our greenhouse gas. Greenhouse gases. We've had some different estimations. But never really done. So that is a very important starting point.
I think. I think it's also important to recognize that, starting with county operations. I think will keep things manageable and, and bite size really. And in the, during the process of. Working on county operations, we can still be having those larger conversations with other jurisdictions and, and helping identify opportunities. For cities and towns within Story County and hopefully, you know, be able to, to expand. That work as, as we go through those conversations. And I think with the most recent derecho and weather events that we've been having, I think it just. Highlights how necessary this work is right now.
I really think it is to start with our own operations is the way to do it because how do we go out and. Advocate, so to speak, for changes unless we're doing them ourselves. I felt that way one time, you know, in terms of water quality, I feel the same way in terms of climate change in general. We need to make sure we're doing the right thing before we can go out and advocate others. So I'm very much in favor of this approach. Seems like the 5,000, that seems real reasonable. Can't think of anything we've gotten later, $5,000. So, so that's a, a good first step because we, we need to have, need to have. That data in order to know where we, where our issues are, what we need to do. So all you're asking today. Resolution about, see, when yours is.
That would be in January, yeah. The resolution would come in January.
Okay, yes, direction. I, I did see there was a comment in chat. So maybe I'll start talking at the end.
Just a thing. Thank you. I think this is a, does a consideration. Who wants to adopt these planning steps in this timeframe?
And then the.
Planning steps in the timeframe.
Yeah.
Right, right.
I'm sorry, I was having a little bit of a hard time hearing. So are you needing? A motion to.
We need to.
Direct?
No, this is a consideration. So we'd need a motion to adopt the planning steps and timeframe.
So.
I would move that we adopt.
Let's see if I can't hear you.
Okay, can you hear me now? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. I, I would move that we adopt the climate resiliency planning steps and timeframe.
Been moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Digna, Basil?
Hi.
Merton, hi. Ted, hi. Thank you. For all the work that's, that's been started and we know there's much more that will be done.
Be a lot.
There's more work to be done. Thanks for doing this.
Thanks, Leanne.
All right, thanks Supervisor Basil for being part of the Ames Climate Action Team and bringing this, this issue back to Story County.
I'm really enjoying the whole process and learning a lot, so I appreciate the opportunity to be part of that.
Thank you. And thank you, Leanne, for all your work on this and what you're going to do.
Right, next we'll move on. We've got the session on consideration of the American Rescue Plan Act eligibility terminations for external applications.
So just, I just want to go over the process quickly, just so that those that are watching via Zoom can understand this as well. And Sandra King is going to join me. Story County is this recipient of over $18 million in funding through the American Rescue Plan Act. And we call it ARPA. That funding, funds must be obligated by the end of 2024 and spent by the end of 2026. Currently, we're following the interim guidelines from the Secretary of Treasury. Then stall on getting the final guidelines. And I actually don't know if there's a date yet, that's been said. We have received 50% of the funds earlier this calendar year 2021 and anticipate the other half next calendar year in 2022. That timeline is set by the federal government as well, as well as the interim guidelines, too. We, we must follow that. And the Story County Board of Supervisors approved application forms in September. Then they released them and invited communities, organizations, external partners to submit proposals in mid-October. We did receive 37 external applications. Staff group then did go through reviewing the applications and then through discussions with the board supervisors at work sessions. The list that's on the agenda was developed. The table that is on the agenda and on the memo identifies the projects that were deemed ineligible. Based on the interim guidelines and Secretary of Treasury. You can, I won't go through each one. The comments on why they're ineligible are listed on the table. Or the, if there are comments, we've listed that, for example, the wastewater loop doing reimbursement is a debt repayment, so that was deemed ineligible. I don't know how, do you want us to go through each one or what would be the preference of the board and how to do this?
Watch through each particular one for the discussion or what project. Would you prefer?
I, 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 I don't know. I, I feel like we, we've had a lot of discussion about each individual project and how we landed on each of those decisions. So I don't know that. We need to go through each one in detail.
Thanks, yeah. Our work session, we have to fight a bit of discussions.
So the action today by the board that staff is requesting that you make the determination that these are ineligible. So that we can go forth then with those that are determined eligible and decide the timeframes and the funding.
Thank you, that's it. I didn't know if you wanted to add.
Just because there was a question about number 11. There was always concern that any projects that contained any construction may not be eligible. And because. Of the information sort of hanging out there that if the board approves. Funding for a project that is deemed ineligible by the Treasury later, the Story County will have to pay that money back. So it's understandable that the board would be cautious if it's unsure and the guidance was just never clear enough for. Construction of a new facility to approve anything like that. And when we went out to try to get additional guidance from NACO, from the Treasury. It just was not clear that you can use those funds for that.
Thank, thank you, yes. It was a little bit clearer, I know, through our work sessions, when it was specific to housing. That had a little bit more clarity, but other construction was not, and it wasn't for lack of trying to obtain information. I think I reached out, I know Sandra always seems to do it, I think the other supervisors, but three or four times to ISAC, NACO, or to the US Treasury. And the US Treasury, or the last response we got back was. Related to private, they're just saying, don't, they don't recommend at this time doing any private. Construction. They're unclear that that is an approved. It was looking at if it was not an approved, they said do not do it under the interim guidelines.
I appreciate Sandra, your, your summary of what we talked about, you know, in the work session. I would point out. That there's not just one project, there's several projects that kind of fell into that category that we said were ineligible. And we talked about them pretty extensively and I think what we ended up saying was because we're talking so hard to try to figure out if they're eligible, we're really stretching. That tells us something right now and we just couldn't get it. And, and the fact that, Shanga, the fact that the money. If later on, and we don't know when later on would be, sometimes some things work really slowly. If we were to find out, you know, that we, it was ineligible and had to pay something back, well, construction could have started. Some money could have been, you know, already gone. And it's how do you get that, how do you pull that money back if it's already in process? So. We decided that, you know, for the taxpayers, you know, of Story County, we really needed to be very cautious about this. And if we had questions on eligibility, we needed to say that it wasn't eligible at this point because. Otherwise, we could be, we could be looking at putting Story County in jeopardy.
And I think that entity as well is, we wanted to them have some. Confirmation or comfort knowing that those dollars would be there. We hate to, in the middle, pull, pull back. That they were not, not available. Supervisor Basil, if you have a comment.
Yeah, I was just kind of right along the lines of what, what you were following up with Lisa and that we wanted to. We, we didn't want to continue to stall the process either because we know there are other opportunities that organizations can be applying for. And that, that they all needed a decision from us sooner rather than later. So that other plans could be made if they needed to be. And we certainly did not want to delay anyone's opportunity to, to look for funding. In other places as well. And we just don't know when we're going to get any clearer answers, if, if we will get any clearer answers.
I would move that we declare applications for 11, 19, 28, 34, 35, and 37 not eligible for funding under Story County's.
I'm sorry, couldn't hear you, Supervisor Basil?
I'm sorry, I would second.
Been moved in seconded. Merton, hi. Basil?
Hi.
Hi. Next, we have the session on consideration of eligibility determination for internal application.
So the, essentially the same process was followed for those projects that were internal to Story County government operations. These were actually due week prior to the other application. So I think these were reviewed by the board first and work sessions. The ones that are in the table are, there are. Three that are definitively not eligible, whether that be based on the interim guidelines or one was submitted late. And then letters E. And M. Are eligible, but the board through work sessions did determine them to be a lower priority. So. Staff, I can, same as the last one, the, the board's decision today is to remove these from discussions as we go forward. Are there any questions? Any questions?
I would move that we designate ineligible projects D, E, F, K, and M from the internal applications for ARPA funding.
Been moved to seconded. Basil?
Hi.
Ted, hi.
Thank you.
Do you know that number reports or other reports? Now's the time for public forum number two. Comments on public, from the public items not on this agenda, the board may not take any action on the comments through the requirements of open meetings, but may do so in the future. If anyone would like to make public comments, if you're on Zoom, please use the raise hand function or if you're in the public meeting room, please raise your hand and go forward. Wait a few seconds. I do not think anyone. Person to raise their hand or go forward. So a closed public forum number two. Leah, have a friend at committee meeting update and announcement.
Well, I just saw in the newspaper this morning that today is the 175th anniversary of the state of Iowa. So. Not the nicest weather for it. I also see from the engineer that we have a lot of icy roads out there. And he's warning that, you know, took a while to get that. Cleaned up because it hit till about 8:30 AM. So I don't know what it's like outside now, but everybody be careful. And I don't know that we're going to say, I know that when Regis just said there are always things that the historical society today that people can go to, I'd recommend virtual if it's possible. It's not a good day for travel. Otherwise. It's, it's. What are we doing this week? We may be visiting the ISU composting facility still tomorrow. I'm really looking for the guests. Supervisor Basil, thank you for putting that together. I'm really looking forward to that. I can't tell you how much, seriously. And then tomorrow afternoon, we have a CIP work session here in our, in our public meeting room. I'm going to be off Thursday afternoon at least. I've got some personal things to take care of. And then we have another holiday weekend coming up and. Monday, next week, everybody, you probably are going to mention this, but next, we don't have a meeting next Tuesday. We need to meet first Monday of the, of the month of the year, basically for organizations, a little longer definition than that, but we'll meet Monday at 10:00 rather than Tuesday. See everybody Monday.
Supervisor, thank you. Supervisor Basil?
Yes, I'm also very excited about going to visit the ISU composting operation tomorrow, as far as I know it's on. And then our CIP work session and I'm looking forward to another longer weekend. I hope everybody is. Staying safe in their travels and we'll get to spend the new year with family and friends and just enjoy a little bit more time relaxing and then. Ready to get going on Monday.
Great, thank you. I have the same meetings with the ISU composting, the CIP work session. Yes, as a reminder, we will be meeting on Monday at 10:00 AM with our organizational meeting and would like to wish everybody a safe and healthy, happy new year. For to stay new in 2022. That takes a little while to get used to writing on my agendas and everything else. So. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Merton, hi. Basil?
Hi.
Ted, hi. We are adjourned. Thank you.